The next item is item number 12, application for certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, docket number 15-3086, block 1670, lot 10, 373 Lewis Avenue in the Stuyvesant Heights Historic District, a late Italianate-style row house with a store on the ground floor, designed by O.E. Hoffser and built in 1883. This is an application to legalize the replacement of a storefront and the installation of a front areaway and side yard fences without Landmark's Preservation Commission permits.
Good afternoon, listeners. I'm Rebecca Salgado, Preservation Department staff. Subject property is on the southwest corner of Lewis Avenue and Macon Street. Here are some photos of the building around the time of designation. These are photos of the building from a few years ago, and these are present-day photos of the building. The applicant proposes to legalize work installed without LPC permits. The first element that the applicant proposes to legalize is the storefront infill. The storefront replaced, the storefront that was in place at the time of designation, you can see here, had a center entrance. From what we can tell, that storefront was not historic. The applicant also proposes to legalize a front areaway fence and a side yard fence installed without LPC permits. The areaway fence is about three and a half feet tall, and the side yard fence is about six feet tall. And applicant Zaree Etchel will further turn the proposal.
Okay, thank you, Rebecca.
Hi, I'm Zaree Etchel, and I'm representing CAT Management, the owner of CAT Management. Charles Atwell is sitting here, and this is regarding the legalization of the fences in the storefront at 373 Lewis Avenue, at the corner of Macon. So just to give you a little bit of history, 373 Lewis Avenue was bought by Mr. Atwell in 2003, and as the previous... So as this slide shows, the storefront was purchased pretty much, it just looked, it was like that since his purchase. Nothing had been done to the property at any time, and at the time of his purchase, he never, it was never discussed or there was ever a conversation that there was a problem. None, there was, this never came up.
This what?
The issue of storefront being illegal, installed illegally. Sorry. Illegally.
Is the old one illegal, or is only the new one illegal?
I'll just explain really quickly. Yeah, this violation was just issued within the past year. The existing storefront was installed before the current owner acquired the property.
Thank you.
So it was apparently in place before 2003. We know that it was changed since designation, but it's been that way for a while.
Okay, thank you.
So now, this is what the storefront looks like. At the time that we received, the owner received information that this was an illegal purchase, this was an illegal storefront. We've been working very closely with Rebecca and, well, actually Landmark's to legal, for a commercial business that's trying to go there. And we were told the sign was illegal, they took it down. The lighting was illegal, which they were willing to take down, but they were waiting for approval from Landmark. And it's only at this time, I think it was December 30th, that we learned all of this was not done correctly. So we just looked around to see what else was going on in the neighborhood, because we just did not know about this stuff in that way. And there were other properties that had the same existing issue, layout, so we just didn't really know about it, sorry. This is what it looks like after we were given instructions from Landmark when the leaseholders of Emeline's wanted to do their business there. So this is what it currently looks like. You can see the fence. This is what, the layout. And this is the fence. This fence was installed some time ago. There was a lot of, there was a problem with garbage on Lewis Avenue, it would fly all over the place. This is obviously a residential building at the side. The garbage was all over the place, and the owner had to be responsible for it. So this was the solution from about 2003, 2004, that was the solution. And it seemed to have worked in, at no time, like looking at, when he put it up, he took into consideration what else was going on in the neighborhood. And up right across the street at the library, it included the same type of fence. The fence that's installed in the front of Emeline's, you'll notice that, if you look past the car, that the fence is the same as the existing fences. It's not something that came out of nowhere. It was done in the same fashion as what existed there already. Again, this is another example of what existed in the neighborhood in the Landmark area, and you see the fence at Mount Lebanon has the same fence. This is the old senior center on Stuyvesant Avenue. And this is a layout of the fencing, similar fencing.
Okay, questions now?
I have a quick question.
Yeah?
So the fence that's there now, if you could go back to the, to the way it looks now, is that it?
Yes, yes, that's how, that's how the building 373 Lewis Avenue looks right now.
Okay, so was that done without permits?
It appears that it was.
So it was done by the other owner?
This was done at a later date to contain the garbage. It was to contain the garbage on the side and to maintain the front.
But the front, don't tell me about.
Yes, yes, yes.
The front was done, and it wasn't done by your client?
No, it was done by the current owner, yes.
That's the thing, it was.
Sorry. The fall of fencing was done by the current owner.
By this gentleman?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay. Without permit?
Can I just ask, what's the, what's the adjacent fence like? You're showing a lot of examples, but what is the, in other words, the row houses, do they have similar fencing?
They have the same fencing, I'm sorry, if you...
Yes, that's what I'm talking about.
Right here, this is a bit of a exaggeration. This is someone made a driveway. But the fencing here and further down, yes, it is the same as this fence, yes.
And then the bottom, right here, is the same?
Yes, the same one, so yes.
That's down further?
381 Lewis, and this is 373.
Okay, thank you. So where is the side, so there's a different one on the side?
Yes.
So what is the, where is that? This one, where, yeah, so...
Right there, whoops.
Go back, so that is...
The side here?
On the building.
The side of Macon.
Right next to the, right next to the door, the entrance.
So that's coming out on the sidewalk around...
Of Macon. That's the side of Macon, right there?
That's the, show it on that corner.
I think it's on the corner, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Right there.
Yeah, that's the edge of it showing, yeah.
But you didn't do that one?
That one actually was done by the owner, yes.
He did all the fencing.
That was done by the owner at the request of the neighborhood. There was a problem with garbage, and that is...
That wasn't done by your clients?
No, no, no. The work that was done by the previous owner was the storefront.
Yeah, doesn't, yeah.
Okay.
But now, what is the purpose of that, the strength? So it's on the side, right? And so it's on the sidewalk to prevent trash?
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
It, it's to prevent the trash, that, this is a residential building also. There's, I think, like four units, and there's a lot of garbage at the side. So you know how you put the garbage...
So you're talking about garbage bags, not litter, but garbage bags, right?
Right, the garbage bags, the garbage cans were being knocked down, or the wind was blowing it all onto Lewis Avenue and by the library.
So let me answer a question. Is your, why would this side one be your responsibility?
Because 373 Lewis Avenue, alternate address is 404 Macon. And this is a multi-use building, the commercial space plus upstairs is a residential, but their entrance is on the side of Macon.
I see.
Yes.
So even though you didn't install it, you're getting, you're getting...
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, it's a corner building, and so they have a storefront installed without permits many years ago, prior to the owner.
Right.
After the owner bought the building, they installed a fence at the front, which aligns with the areaways on the other buildings. And a fence on the side, which is taller, runs down the entire side of the building.
Why does that fence need to be six feet high?
I think it, I think that it was put there because the people were going through the garbage, the garbage was, the garbage cans were being knocked over, and I guess it was seen as the best way to contain the garbage, and it also matched what was right across at the Macon Library, so it just made sense to keep it within the same look.
Yes, Roberta?
Okay, just in terms of the fence, the high fence, I'm thinking that, I don't really understand what that is. I mean, we don't have a photograph that shows the entrance, I guess, of the building on that side, but I don't know why...
So the entrance is over here...
Why do you think it's a high fence?
Oh, because it was definitely becoming a problem for the neighborhood, and he was asked to do something about it. The garbage can, people were going through the garbage cans.
He needed the trash enclosure.
Yeah, period.
Right.
Yeah.
Because it's a corner property, and the trash was going all over Lewis Avenue. You know when people go through the garbage can, or the wind knocks it down, and it was just rolling out, and in front of the library. So they asked him if he could do something, and he did something.
Okay. Any further questions? Yes?
Just the storefront design. So can you talk about how that storefront design, you know, where there are other ones that are similar in design to it, et cetera?
Uh-huh.
That are in the district. Okay. Before we go there, can I ask one question? Is this a situation where a new tenant's coming in and the violation has to be cured, and we're going to see a proposal for change in the storefront later?
No, the storefront is fine as it is. The new tenant does not want to change it, change it. They want to resolve it because they don't want it to be a problem later. They've been there for some time, waiting to, you know, working to get the business open, and they're kind of scared that business will be disrupted. And that itself becomes a liability to the owner and the business, because they've invested. And we didn't hear about this until much later. So these are other businesses on Lewis Avenue. This is 370 Lewis Avenue, which has an aluminum and glass storefront. Here goes another one, this one just came over, 366 Lewis Avenue, where there is aluminum and glass storefront. So there are several up and down.
Sorry, what do you mean it just came over?
Oh, I'm sorry, this business just opened, Fillmore, sorry.
But is that in the historic?
Nothing changed.
Is that in the historic?
No, nothing changed about the architecture. I'm sorry, I guess because I live in the neighborhood, I just know that they just opened their business, but nothing changed, no.
But is that in the historic district?
Yes, that's right across the street, yes.
Those are both in the expanded Stuyvesant Heights Historic District.
So that predates the, yeah, okay.
Okay, any other, anything to add, any other questions? Okay, we'll go to testimony, and then we'll come back to you in a moment or two. Thank you.
Barbara Z, the Historic District's Council. While historic photographs do not reveal the existence of a particularly noteworthy storefront on this building, HDC finds that the current replacement does not represent an improvement, thus moving the building in the wrong direction. HDC also finds the fence, which is installed directly into the concrete sidewalk without a curb, to be inappropriate. Thank you.
Okay, any other testimony? Community Board Three, looked at this carefully and at length, and I'll read from their Community Board Three Landmarks Committee. Let me see if this went to the full board. Not certain it went to the full board, but the committee is in support of the efforts, I'll just read from the letter, "by the representatives of Emeline's LLC, to make this building into a lucrative business that will serve the community well. They will hire employees from the community and become part of the economic revitalization and stability needed for, needed in the Bedford-Stuyvesant-Stuyvesh/Stuyvesant Heights Historic District. We appreciate the representatives from Emeline's LLC. Quick response to answer the violations they receive from the LPC. We hope that this process will be resolved quickly so that Emeline's LLC will be able to complete all the requirements stated by LPC and the Department of Buildings. A sit-down diner that will be open for breakfast and lunch and is capable of serving more than 10 people at a time is much needed in this community. We, the community, look forward to the opening of this venue." That's from Evelyn Collier, CB Three Landmarks Committee Chair. Okay, do you want to add anything to, anything that's been said in the testimony? Anything further? Yeah, just, just go up in the front, if you don't mind, please, thank you.
And the thing in the, in the restaurant is called Brooklyn, that's where the old place was up, the batched area. So our whole concept is schoolhouse lights, you know, to keep the idea of the era. Even, even some of our menu will be matching what we had in the kids in every Stuyvesant, you know.
Okay.
So that kind, that has a real keeping with the kind of landmark concept.
Okay, thank you very much. Marjorie, want to lead off on this, please?
So, this is tricky, and I, I kind of don't want to, want to be saying what I feel like I have to be saying, because there's so much work that's been done here. But the first part is, I don't have, I think that the low fence can be justified because it lines up with the other fences, but the installation, where it sort of slams into the, into the sidewalk, that's actually not typical of how fences are mounted. They usually are, if we look at the pictures, on a curve. So, so that, you know, all the fences that are shown sit on top of like a six-inch curve or some amount like that. The other part is that those kind of little, I don't know what they are, newel posts, that are just like a three-inch square, also aren't typical of the kind of post that you see on that kind of fencing. In terms of the side fence, which I do appreciate the need for trash enclosure, I do think that a fence of some type around is, is appropriate there, but this one is too tall. I'm not, it's, it's actually way beyond the needs of a trash enclosure, which would be normally like 42 inches, or the height of this existing, the front fence. With respect to the storefront, I, I'm not really sure if everything is proposed to stay exactly the same, because I don't actually understand, like, the school lighting and things like that, and maybe that's an interior feature that was mentioned in testimony. But that wooden sign band, I don't think that that's appropriate like that. I think before, it was hidden by the awning, so you actually didn't see. So that needs to be treated in some way. And then the quality of the storefront just isn't the quality that we would normally expect to see in the historic district, so maybe there's a way of cladding it. It's not, it's not the spacing, it's more of the kind of, it's your sort of classy, cheesy aluminum storefront that's not up to, up to grade. Maybe there is a way to clad it as opposed to remove it entirely, but I don't know the answer to that.
Joan?
I'm thinking that, I'm just taking off what Marjorie just said, that maybe there's a way to take that spandrel panel down at the bottom and infill it with something in order to be, be reasonable in a way to fix it. And I think that might be suitable. And I could accept the low fence and the side fence, because of all the reasons that Marjorie gave, and I can accept it the way it is. I guess a curb should be put on, but that could probably be done very carefully by workmen without damaging the fence and just raising it a little bit and putting it on a curb. And then the side one, I would do the same thing. I would put it on a curb, but I would lower it, and you can save the money by cutting it down, having somebody that knows what they're doing just cut it down and lower it onto a curb. So I think this could be done in a reasonable way without being crazy.
Okay, thank you. Michael?
One of the, the difficult things about being in this position is being able to put aside personal feelings about all the issues here and, and dealing in fact with what the regulations are. And, and so when these things come with a violation, I always have to viscerally put myself in the position of, if, if this was a new application, could we approve it? In, all, all that aside, what I would say is, what, what I would consider approving, I think much of what Joan said is, is correct. I'm, I'm assuming there are tables that go outside in the summertime, and so there is a reason to have a, a lower fence around this. The curbing, yes, I mean, there should be curbing. There is actually enough clearance between the bottom of the smaller fence and, and the, the sidewalk to actually build up a small curb. I think Joan is, is also correct, that you could take that existing storefront and build upon it, so that you could have a panel system with Belexion moldings that actually would appear to be an appropriate storefront. I also agree, I, I don't think that, well, hopefully, the, the pseudo-gentrification of this neighborhood has resulted in a situation where people are not now climbing through garbage cans, although I am personally, I personally go through garbage cans occasionally, pulling out artifacts, not garbage.
Don't forget your video.
But, well, exactly. But, and so that I would hope that you would be able to reduce the height of the fence on the side to perhaps 42 inches or 48 inches, not, not such an egregious feature.
Do you want to say something?
Just the sign, I forgot about the wood on the top, somebody has to address that, to fix that, yeah.
So I think that the changes that are recommended to the fences by my colleagues, which is to make them all the lower height and to install a curb, will go a long way towards enhancing the beauty of this building and making it fit in better in the district. Where I'm really struggling is what to suggest for the storefront. And, you know, I, I understand the need to get the business open again, and there certainly is a demand for it. But I think that the, the materials used and the style of the storefront are just not at all in keeping with the storefront found in this district. And so I have a hard time saying that, that that can be approved. So I think we're going to need to look for a little bit better, at least, configuration of the windows of the storefronts, and perhaps some kind of painted sign or something that obscures that wooden section above the storefront. But I don't want to tell you what to do, just that this is not, it's very hard to find it appropriate.
My thoughts. Yes, it's true that the low fence should have a curb on it. I don't think it's as easy as some have indicated, just put a curb under it and not disassociate the fence, not to disassemble the fence because of the side fence. I mean, there's a slope, so I don't know how you do that. I'm, I'm thinking I'm willing to overlook that, because the fence, you see the fence in other parts of the neighborhood, this very, very fence, just not on a curb. I'm also okay with the high fence on the side. It's a commercial street, there are no windows there, it's not really interfering visually, in my judgment, with any aspect of the building. You see right through it. Probably had we been able to do this in the normal way, come for an approval, we would have suggested lower fence, but I'm really not, I don't think that's the, the problem. To me, the problem is the, is the storefront. But again, I think Joan's point about how it might be fixed rather than ripped out and all start over again is a reasonable one. And I think that perhaps putting stone or some other material in, in the bulkhead might well go a long way to resolving that. But the biggest problem, the biggest problem of all, is the sign pan and the, and the lights or whatever is ripping across there. To me, earlier pictures show an awning. I don't know if that's the, exactly the right awning, probably not, but an awning covering up all that stuff, including covering up all of the different heights of the two roll-down grills, et cetera, et cetera. An awning could go a long way to resolving that in a, in a very simple way, and, and also in a way that connotes, to me, restaurant, both as a, as a visual imagery, but also as a useful thing for a restaurant, and also would allow some signage that advertises the presence of the restaurant.
I'm, I'm almost 100% with Fred on this one. I, I think that the curbing and the side fence would be nice, but are not essential for me, and, and I think that Joan's suggestion, those, the, the lower panels on the storefront are inserted aluminum, textured aluminum panels, and can easily be either replaced with something else or added to with a tile or a stone that would easily fill them in a reasonable way, and that would give it at least a little bit of a quality boost. But I think for, for me, the solution of the sign band, which I don't think is, and it's great that there, the applicant had said that they were going to remove the lights or work with sta, work with staff to modify the lights, and that's, that's fantastic. I think that the sign band should be, the wood should be removed, and what's under it should be restored or, or, you know, made to match the brownstone and brick, which I, I would imagine is underneath there. And just put a simple awning, you know, a retractable awning of the kind we approve at the staff level to cover up the gates. The place will look a million times better, and I'd rather see them spend their money on, on that than on messing with the fence.
Yeah, I, I agree with Commissioner Blain on the fence, and I think work with staff on the storefront and...
Yeah, good solution, yeah, yes.
And to listen to my colleagues, I could go without the curbing, too.
Okay, Joan, thank you.
Leave the side one on.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry, excuse me. Joan?
Okay.
Diana, sorry.
Yeah, it's fine, okay. So I was listening with interest, because I hadn't really thought about the curbing. It does extend it from the residential area, obviously, at the same time, this being a corner in this commercial activity here, I think I could look at it a little differently, and I could be okay without the curbing. I think that the height of the fence, I definitely wouldn't want to reduce it too much if we're, we're going to be reduced, because, you know, these situations, when you've got, you know, garbage cans and other things, can be rather difficult, and I was hearing that, you know, the community and the local, other cultural activities and things were being disrupted by it. And people do, even in nice neighborhoods, go around and pick out bottles and cans and take them to the supermarket and leave everything, you know, in disarray. I certainly see that happening. And so I think, I don't know what they're going into the garbage for, but that could be one of the things that's happening. So anyway, you want something nobody can reach over easily, and I, I think I'm okay with just leaving it as it is. What really disturbs me, as some of the others, is, is that wood paneling, and that really needs to be addressed. And if it can be just removed and the, beneath it, I assume it's brick still, or whatever be restored, that would be the best, or, you know, fixed, and, and with a, a small awning. And I agree with other speakers, though, you know, an awning would be, would be an enhancement, covering up those roll downs, and could, could benefit the establishment as well, obviously, because you could use it for signage and people to be under it and so forth. So either just a small retractable awning, or if necessary, if that it's too damaged or the alternatives wouldn't work too well, a, a larger awning, as Fred suggested earlier. So, and I think that the improvement to the storefront could be done, as, as Joan suggested in general, so you could work with what you've got existing and not have to make too much modification.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so in terms of the fencing, I could accept the front fencing as it is, without the curb, although, you know, it was the, the occupant, or the applicant, rather, who showed us all the, all the examples that this was supposed to be like, with the, with the base, maybe, maybe...
that this was supposed to be, uh, like, with the, with the base, maybe think of that. Um, uh, for me, the, the high fence on the side, uh, does not, I, I don't, I don't see how that's appropriate at all. And I, I mean, I, I think that the problem as described could be a real problem, and it happens in, in all over, I think, in various neighborhoods. And I would hate to think that the solution for every neighborhood is this, and I, I, and I think it diminishes the street and the building. But I could accept, I guess, a fence if it was door.
Forty-two.
If they had come here first, I would accept it, if they had known, but, oh. Um, now, for the storefront, I think that the idea that was, um, brought up before, modifying what's existing, uh, and, and maybe just changing the door, maybe that also would, um, upgrade the storefront without, um, replacing the whole thing. And so, maybe this is something that there are, that have to work on with the staff, in terms of creating that. And, um, and also look at those ideas that were discussed about what to do with the sign band. And I'm not sure if that little corner door or last, if that, if the solid gate was, I don't think.
That should be looked at, too. Okay. Okay, so we have a lot of useful, I think we're re- coming close to reaching, uh, suggesting several solutions that you can work with the staff on to implement. We won't take any action today, we'll work, go through that process, make those changes, um, or consider them, and then go back and forth, and it should be, hopefully, it can be resolved. And then we would, uh, take whatever action we later need to take, or not, but whatever it is, just to begin that process based on what you've heard here today, and hopefully, it will get, uh, all, all resolved. And work with Rebecca and Sarah and close this hearing for today. Motion, second, without objection?
Take, ask, yes, go ahead. Thank you, thank you very much. Okay.